Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this great evening. Thanks for turning out to the Ashland Town Council Candidates Forum this evening. My name is Eddie Hahn. It looks like it is absolutely pouring down rain right now. So, okay, so we're all warming dry here today. I'm the Chair of the Coalition for Candidates' Future. We're one of the sponsors this evening. I'd like to acknowledge the other general sponsors for this town forum. Randolph Makin College, Harold Progress, Market Ashland Partnership, and WAAN Rainbow. So, we're happy to be partnering for this forum. I want to thank also to a few folks. The League of Women Voters Richmond Metro Chapter is here tonight. They will be facilitating the questions up to the podium. So, as you see them walking through, they probably already give you some, a piece of paper. You might have submitted a question. If you've got a thought, raise your hand. So, they'll be watching. I'd like to thank Jonathan Kimble, the Ashland Town Clerk, for this facility. Rick Brand for recording for the broadcast and replay on Channel 17. And I understand this is being live streamed tonight. And I want to thank Brandon Martin at the RNC Print Shop Print Services for the signings this evening. And Bill Roberts for being our moderator. Our candidates, and I'll introduce them, and then I will turn the program over to Mr. Roberts, are Fay Pritchard, Terry Winston Abree, and James Murray. All right, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight in this horrible, horrible weather that we're having. And I guess you just came in to take shelter. Maybe that's what it was. The plan for tonight is that each of the three candidates will have an opening statement of about three minutes. Now, I guess I should show you what I'm doing here. Any of my public speaking students, Randolph Makin, are familiar with my timer. And so, I brought it for you tonight as well, but also for our candidates. Unfortunately, you can't see it and let them see it too. I think it's more important for them to see the time. So, I'm going to turn it around so that they can see what it is. There will be three minutes for each of the candidates to make an opening statement. And then, we'll take questions from the floor. And each candidate will have an opportunity to respond, two minutes for each response. We struggled with a way to start this off and thought that probably the best way is just alphabetical to begin tonight's opening comments. But after that, then we'll start, I will just start with my, on my, on my left here with Fay. And the first question will go to her, and then down the line, and then we'll go to Terry with your question, and we'll go down the line. And then, I'll rotate evenly throughout the evening. The closing statements will be three minutes each. So, I'm counting on you folks to give us questions. Otherwise, tonight's forum will be 18 minutes long. And that's probably not a great idea. So, there will be people circulating to pick up the questions. And as we continue tonight, they'll feed the questions up here to me, and I'll be glad to give them to our candidates. So, that's the plan for this evening. And I hope everybody is, has got some ideas that they'd like to share with our candidates because this is the time to do it. Good evening to our three candidates, Fay Pritchard, and Terry Abree Winston, and James Murray. Thanks for coming in tonight. We have two seats available for the town council and three candidates. My suggestion was to draw straws, but that didn't seem to go over very well. So, we're going to continue with the electoral process, which is probably the best way to do it. So, going alphabetically then, if my alphabet is still working correctly, James, you get to start us off. And if you would, we'll give you three minutes according to my clock. I will give you a 30-minute, I'll interrupt you guys at 30 seconds. And then, at time, I'll say time, but I won't get up and hit you with a baseball bat if you go over. So, James?
Thank you, and good evening. I wish that it would be perhaps a bit drier of an evening, but I guess this is a sign that spring has come, and hopefully, the unending winter storms have ended. Of course, we moved from winter storms to spring storms, so here we are. I moved to Ashland in 2005 as a Randolph Makin student. And even though at first I was resistant to the town, you know, I'd grown up in a small town all my life, and I thought I was ready for the big city. Ashland has this way of pulling you in. There's a sort of allure and appeal that holds you in the town. And so, I stayed at Randolph Makin until I graduated in 2009. I left the town for a while, but of course, that never lasts for long because less than a year later, I returned and bought a house on South Taylor Street, found a job at Randolph Makin, and opened up my own advertising agency in Ashland to help the small business owners in the community. When I did that, I discovered that there are so many opportunities to get involved with the community. And since Ashland has been so good to me every year that I've been here, I was thrilled to find an opportunity to get involved in any way that I could. So, I started, as I was involved with small businesses, I started working on community projects. I helped direct a documentary about the motel homeless population. And I directed a documentary about the history of the strawberry fair, among many other projects. Of course, the more you get involved, the more you want to continue involvement. And when I heard that there were elections coming up in the town and that there was a seat open, I thought this was an excellent opportunity to let my voice be heard and to see how I could affect change in the town from a political level. And I realized that as I was talking to people, as I started the campaign, that there were some ideas that I had, there was a voice that I had that would really benefit the town. My platform, very briefly, is comprised of three major components. I love the town, and I love the way the town works. And so, first and foremost, I promised that I want to maintain Ashland's identity. We have a wonderful community and a wonderful identity that's been established by the community, the small businesses, the people of Ashland. And that's an identity that we have to adhere to. Now, I also want to promote small business because Ashland is a community that's built on the backbone of small business. It's one of the greatest things about our town. And seeing the vibrance and diversity in our, in our small business community, it really encourages me to try to help them as much as I possibly can. And finally, because I'm a bit younger, I've sort of become the de facto technology candidate. And one of the things that I really want to focus on is expanding and ensuring that we have adequate Internet options as time goes on. Right now, we're stuck with one provider, and we really need to expand that. I'd like to thank all of the sponsors here tonight. I'd like to thank you all for coming out and braving the weather. And I hope that this is an excellent opportunity for us to get to know each other.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, let's see, Fay Pritchard.
Thank you. I too would like to thank all the sponsors and thank Bill for being our moderator tonight.
I may need that engineer mine over here. Okay, there you go. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This morning, when I was getting ready for work, as I do most mornings of my life, I was watching Murder She Wrote while I brushed my teeth and fixed my hair, and wondering why I like the Cabot Cove episodes the best instead of the ones where Jessica is off in Europe or off in New York. And I started thinking about Cabot Cove and what it represents, and Mayberry, and how we think about it. And it's an easy answer. We love those the best because the romantic notion of the small town is a deeply American ideal. And I believe deeply and profoundly in a sense of place, in living in a place that isn't, as someone recently said to me, a bedroom community, a place where people live, a place where people put their roots and plan to raise their children and plan to raise their grandchildren. I heard recently from a state-level elected official that small towns should be gotten rid of. We should, we should vote them out of existence because all they effectively do is collect extra taxes on top of what people already pay. And I beg to differ. What small towns do is protect a particular way of life. They protect zoning and planning and the things that don't seem very sexy on their surface, but make the place we live the place we live. Or as our comprehensive plan says, what makes Ashland, Ashland. When I was elected 12 years ago, I had a very big agenda. I was going to protect Ashland forever from all the bad developers and make sure we stayed exactly the same. And as every new candidate who is elected finds out about 15 minutes into being elected, first of all, your agenda's always skewed, and as it turns out, all developers are not bad. And second of all, you have a very short amount of time to pursue your agenda because the rest of the time, you're doing a job. And running this town is a job. It's a labor of love. What I've tried to do for 12 years is to make sure that I work on preserving that small-town atmosphere, that way of life that we all value so much. And at the same time, balancing that with the fiscal opportunities to make sure we get to keep this small town the way that it is. That is my pledge for the next 12 years.
Thirty seconds.
To keep us, I think, at a steady pace, protect the jobs that we are bringing to town, the jobs that we have in town, and at the same time, make sure that we stay Ashland and we keep Ashland, Ashland. Thank you.
Thank you. And Terry Winston Abree.
Good evening, everyone. So happy to be here, so happy to see you all, and thank you, as everyone else has said, for being here. It's always good to know we have a few diehard Ashlanders who will come out no matter what the weather is. First of all, let me say that it was really not my intention to run again. I've received, over the last couple of years, I've received several phone calls from people in various parts of the town of Ashland asking me to run again. And, you know, what I do always, first, I pray, and then, I mull it over, and then, I get my answer. And so, I felt like my prayer was, the prayer being answered was for me to run again. I'm a person who is gifted in service. This is who I am, and this is what I do. I serve the people. While I agree with the small business, I also agree that, being here in Ashland, I also feel that we need to look at other types of businesses, and we need to do surveys among the people to find out what types of businesses they want, you all want, here in the town so that we don't lose them, some of them, as quickly as they come in. If you, if you'd say, okay, well, I want a Macy's, or a Dillard's, or some type of business like that, and we need to find people, our economic development coordinator needs to go out and say, well, you know, are you willing to come into our town? Simply because of the fact that you want to have a business that will be sustained and a business that the people want in the town, and hopefully, it will stay. Over the last few years of being out of council, I wasn't just kind of sitting around doing nothing. I went back to school briefly and got, I became a certified licensed nurse assistant. I'm also a parent educator, and that's through the Supreme Court. I've also been assisting people with housing. I have a few homes, and over, I suppose, the last 15 years, I've helped people who were homeless, at least six families who have been homeless, and only
Thirty seconds.
Only charged them what was needed to pay the mortgage. My goal is to work with the communities, to make sure that people know what's happening in the town, and that the town, as well as the residents and the college, we're all working together so that we can be one happy family, if that is possible. I want Ashland to be an oasis, a place where people want to come because the people who live here
Time.
Want them to be here.
I gotta say, I wasn't going to hit you with a baseball bat. Okay, and let's, I'm going to spend the rest of the time now talking about the questions that you've submitted. I have some here, and please, as you think of questions, there are some volunteers back here will come and pick up your questions and bring them up to me. Since we started off with James, I'll move down the list alphabetically to Fay Pritchard. And all of you will have an opportunity to respond to these questions as soon as I can make this thing stop, though. And there will be two minutes response for each of these. Here's the question. What is the biggest challenge facing Ashland?
I think probably the biggest challenge facing Ashland is to make sure that as growth happens all around us, it happens appropriately here in the town. Right now, I would point directly at Lewistown Road and what's happening up there. Bass Pro is at Lewistown. There's a brand-new hotel at Lewistown. And while I think those are absolutely good things for the county, the problem is, our hotel stock is aging. And a significant portion of our budget comes from that hotel stock. I think part of our challenge is going to be to find ways to keep our restaurants and our hotels fresh and inviting. We actually have one-ninth of the hotel rooms in the entire Richmond region, but we certainly don't have one-ninth of the hotel visitors in the entire Richmond region because much of our stock is aging. So, I think with our new economic development coordinator, that's one of the things I've talked about, is that we need to, very early on, offer them assistance in ways that we can work with them. But I think all of the economic challenges speak to our personal goals for the town, that if we want to continue to have the life that we have here in Ashland, we have to find ways to pay those bills. It's always a balance between business and way of life. They can't be separate issues.
Okay. Same question. What's the biggest challenge facing Ashland? And I'm directing that question to Terry Winston Abree.
People, I think. People, in the sense that people working together, people, you know, just as Fay said, you know, you're always going to have the challenges with the businesses, as I said before, bringing in businesses that are, that people want to shop at, you know, people, the businesses that we've decided that we want here in town. But I think one of the biggest challenges that I see is communication with each other. I think that we need to work on that. I think that we need to work on our interpersonal relationships between races, between the town and the people. For example, participation in functions and different functions that they have here in town, like the organizations that they may have, like Main Street and some of the other things that we do. There is a lack of uniformity, I think. I see that anyway, and I think a lot of other people see it. But I think that unless we start working together as a community, I don't think that the town will be the way that we really want it to be. I think that you might have to see it from my
Thirty seconds.
Point of view before you can completely understand what I'm saying. But I think that we need to work on that. I think we need to work on relationships between the people and the town so that we can be a better town.
Okay, thank you. And the same question to James Murray, and that is, what's the biggest challenge facing Ashland?
Thank you. The discussions that I have seen so far revolving around the discussion of the budget have been concerning to me. I think Mayor Pritchard was absolutely correct when she said that there are some very real fiscal challenges that we're facing as a community, and we have to deal with a lot of our aging stock. And that's something that we absolutely need to focus on. Now, fortunately, we're sort of on the brink of revitalization with a lot of, a lot of the aspects of town that we're talking about. You know, being able to focus on bringing the Ashland Theater up and running, getting some arts and culture into the Arts and Culture District, encouraging new businesses, these are all very, very important goals that we can have that will strengthen our community and increase our ability to bring in more revenue. Now, we've already had quite a few discussions about ways to limit expenditures. I think Mr. Hargrove and Mr. Farah have done some excellent work trying to reduce expenditures while increasing revenues. And a lot of, a lot of work is being done in town in order to increase these revenues. That's, that's really fantastic. Now, Terry also encourages everybody to work together, and that is more important than ever right now, that we have some budget shortfalls, and we're having to borrow money against our own accounts. It's going to be exceptionally important for all of us to pull together to encourage business development in town, to make sure
Thirty seconds.
That we're doing the types of things that we need to do to make sure that Ashland is fiscally sound both now and long into the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It seems like we're getting down to the nitty-gritty with these next questions. I lost my place. Oh, I think it's for you, Terry Winston Abree, and I'll let you start this one off. This is a question that says, what do you think about changing Ashland's B-Pole tax to be computed on net rather than gross sales to help businesses during these tough economic times?
Hmm, I don't know. That would be ideal. I mean, anyone who's in business would actually probably appreciate, other than the fact that, other than taking it away completely, they probably would appreciate taking B-Pole from the net. You know, that's not a question that I can, I can answer singularly because there's a lot to consider, you know? How does it affect, how would it affect the town? And that's always the biggest thing, you know? How will that affect the revenue for the town? And I know that as we look at it now, it probably would not be a good idea. But, you know, I'm all for helping, you know, where it can be, people where it can be helped, but, you know, that's, that's a dangerous question, actually. It's a very dangerous question, but I say, let me say this. If it were up to me personally, I'd say, yes, let's give the businesses a break, if it were up to me. But I know that that's not realistic at the same time.
Okay. All right. James Murray, same question. What do you think about changing Ashland's B-Pole tax to be computed on net rather than gross sales to help businesses during these tough economic times?
Well, while normally, I am all about giving incentives to our small businesses to continue operating in Ashland, this is a, that'd be a pretty extreme tax cut here, that there are all sorts of ways that you can do accounting to make it look like your net isn't quite as great as it might otherwise be. Now, there's a lot of benefits to businesses being in the town of Ashland. And existing within the town is, you know, it's one of those things where, while cutting taxes here would be nice, the town of Ashland depends on its businesses to run and vice-versa. The businesses need the town to run for the businesses to run. And there are quite a few challenges facing our businesses, but maybe reducing, you know, only taxing net rather than gross would hurt the town quite a bit more than it would help the businesses. And so, I think this is one of those areas where, as much as we would love to offer all the tax cuts in the world, we have to be realistic and understand that there's certainly a cost to doing business in the town, and this is just one of those taxes that has to be paid. So, we absolutely need to find incentives for businesses to come to town, but, you know, and this might be an area where we can explore more, maybe new businesses. Maybe for the first five years, businesses can enjoy
Thirty seconds.
Taxes on their net rather than their gross. But for the time being, I, with Terry, can feel like this isn't something that we should really offer at this time.
Okay. And the same question. What do you think about changing Ashland's B-Pole tax to be computed on net rather than gross to help businesses?
I'm going to answer that a little bit differently. That's not the town's prerogative. How B-Pole is calculated is state law, not local law, and the town doesn't have permission to change how it's calculated. That being said, we have lowered B-Pole tax in the last few years. It's been about four years since we've lowered B-Pole tax since I've been on council. We've lowered B-Pole tax once. We've lowered real estate taxes once. We've raised real estate taxes once. We have the most steady real estate and steady B-Pole tax in the area. And I do agree with James that there, we certainly do need to be helping our businesses. There's no question about it, but I don't think B-Pole is the way to do that. And if it were, that's not a way we'd be allowed to do it.
Okay. The next question, we start off with, I lost my place, James Murray. And let me ask you this one. Will you stop or not permit another gas station, auto supply store, or loan shop?
You know, I was really kind of hoping somebody was going to ask about auto parts I feel confident that if anything happens to my car, that a short walk down the street will yield six or seven different options for places where I can buy auto parts. On the other hand, you know, I feel like we might be just about saturated with auto parts stores in a two-block area. Yes, I will, I will do what I can to make sure that the new businesses that we have in Ashland are actually new businesses rather than just carbon copies of one another. Now, of course, every business is a little bit different, and everybody wants to be able to share their vision of how a business is run with the rest of the community. Now, part of this will be, part of this is sort of something that I've already addressed, that I am a big proponent, proponent of small, locally-owned businesses. And there's not all that many small, locally-owned auto parts stores. Rather, it's creative new stores, creative new places, businesses, offices that our residents and our regional residents can offer to the town. So, I wasn't speaking idly when I said that Ashland is a community built on the backbone of small business. That's the business that we need to encourage. We certainly don't need any more auto parts stores. I think we have enough gas stations. It's really time to buckle down and make
Thirty seconds.
Sure that we have fresh ideas and new businesses in town. Thank you.
And Fay Pritchard, will you stop or not permit another gas station, auto, auto supply store, or loan shop?
I feel like I'm the town crier for the state government. No, it's against the law. No locality has a right to say what business may or may not come to their locality. What you can say is this particular zoning district is appropriate for these kinds of businesses, and this particular zoning district is not. You can't say, you know what, I don't like loan shops. And frankly, I don't like loan shops. I think what they do is immoral, and I think they take advantage of our military men and women. I think they take advantage of the least among us. That being said, by state law, we do not have the right to say that they can't come. And we are very limited in where, in where we can say they cannot come. I think what we can do is encourage the kinds of businesses that we want, that we can use our economic development coordinators. We can, we can scout out the kinds of businesses we want. One of the things we know when people say, I would like a large department store, well, me too, but we're probably not getting that. Because in order, when large retailers make their decisions about where they want to go, they base it, base it on the kinds of rooftops you have, on the, on the kinds of homes that are there. For a large retailer to come to Ashland, we would have to have a lot more high-end homes, a lot fewer rental properties. That's what those folks are looking for when they decide to relocate somewhere. So, there, our comprehensive plan is the key to how
Thirty seconds.
We think about all of these things. But Virginia operates on something called the Dillon Rule, which means we do what the state tells us we can do, not things that they don't tell us we can do.
Okay. And Terry Winston Abree, will you stop or not permit any more gas stations? Or timers here either? Let's see if I can make that work. Gas station, auto supply store, or loan shop?
Well, I really hate those loan stores because of the interest rates that they charge. I think it's, I don't know if somebody's already said this, but I think it's immoral. It's really horrible. I know that there are people who feel that they need to use them, and I know that, I know people who have used them. But I personally would not, you know, if I, if I had the ability to do so, I would not agree to allow another one to come into town. to do so, I would not agree to allow another one to come into town. As far as auto parts stores are concerned, I too feel that we have enough of them. Gas stations, well, you know, if we had a gas station on the other side of town, on this side of town, on this side of the tracks, it may not be so bad. But, you know, I mean, where we have gas stations now, I don't think that we need another one. But if we have one on this side of the tracks, it wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing as far as I'm concerned. But the other, as far as the other two are concerned, no, I would not promote or support any efforts towards that end.
Okay. Our next question is directed first towards Faye Pritchard, and the, this thing is very honorary, isn't it? The question is, where do you stand on the proposed development on Chapman Street and Route 54?
I can't tell you that. I've consulted with our attorney very clearly. As most of you know, I'm an adjacent property owner. I will be allowed to participate in council discussions. I will be allowed to participate in voting on that. We have consulted the Commonwealth's attorney to make sure that that's true, but that is a case in progress, and I'm not allowed to comment on it at all. Thanks.
And the same question, I'll direct to Terry Winston Abree. Where do you stand on the proposed development on Chapman Street and Route 54?
I still think that there is a lot of discussion that needs to be made. There's no single answer at this point to that question, simply because of the fact that there may be people, there probably are several people or groups of people who may be against the development, but I have not discussed it with anyone. I've heard discussions in regards to it, but it's not something that I can say, well, yeah, let them, let's build the homes there, you know, let's develop that property. I can't say that because I think the discussion is still open, and I don't necessarily have an opinion on it at this point. I really don't. Excuse me.
Okay. And to James Murray, where do you stand on the proposed development of Chapman Street and Route 54?
Yeah, so Green Acres was originally conceived in 1983 as a retirement community, and that's a position that was reaffirmed in the 2011 Comprehensive Plan, and I think it's a strong position. Now, building a retirement community in Green Acres would be vastly beneficial for the town. Ashland, like many places across the country, has a growing elderly population, and currently we don't have many places that an elderly population can receive the level of care that they might need. And so we're going to be stuck in a position where unless we create areas for our aging residents to live, our elderly population will be faced with the choice of either remaining where they are, unable to receive the care that they need, or having to leave the town of Ashland entirely, neither of which option I find terribly appealing. Now, the alternative of just building a development there that is, say, targeted towards seniors isn't entirely adequate either, because something that's targeted towards seniors doesn't necessarily make it exclusive to seniors. And as we have growth in the region, you know, we're talking about a development that might have as many as 500 units, so that could be upwards of 1,000 new people in the town. That's a significant amount of growth. And as, like I say, as the community experiences growth, those people are going to have places that they want to live, and they're going to see these new, new places to live in the town of Ashland. And so what was senior-targeted living will become pretty much free-for-all available housing. So as far as my position on this development near Chapman Street, I think we need to stick to the spirit of the original zoning and what's listed in the 2011 Comprehensive Plan.
This next question I may have to rewrite a bit. And the question directed to Terry Winston Abree, "How can we, as a town, engage young families, or do you see Ashland as becoming more of a retirement town in the future?"
It's been so long since I've been young. It's hard to remember. I'm sure he's going to have a great answer for it. I'm thinking about retirement now, so that's a good question. Now, is that question saying, how can we bring younger people into the community?
Let me reread it for you. It says, "How can we, as a town, engage young families and youth in general to be more inviting or invited to the town? Or do you see Ashland as a wonderful retirement town in the future?" I think there's probably two sides to that question.
Well, it seems like the question, I don't know if this is the question, but it seems like the question to me is, how do we get, how do we get young people more involved in the going's on in the town? And one of the things that I think that we could do, if that is, if that is the question, and if it's not, whoever asked the question, you can stop me, but one of the things that we can do is what's being done right now, and that is to have young people, is to bring young people together and control environments. And I'm seeing more organizations bringing young people together in the form of tutoring and mentoring and that kind of thing. As far as parents bringing young people into the community is concerned, I think that you have to have younger people at the helm. You have to have things that young people enjoy in the town. What do we have in Ashland that would encourage a younger person to come to the town of Ashland to live? You have to have that kind of a small-town desire, I think, to want to be here.
Thirty seconds. I'm giving you extra time since I interrupted you.
Okay. So I don't know. I think that you have to have something that would attract younger people. And excuse me again, but what that is, I'm not really sure. Things have changed so much since I was young, and so I'm not quite sure all of what they like now. I like the town because it is, to me now, more of a retirement town, but it's a safe place, and I think that would attract younger people.
Okay. I did add an extra 30 seconds on since I interrupted you, but it's a complicated question, so I'll read it again. "How can we, as a town, engage young families, youth in general, to be inviting, I guess, the town to become more inviting to young people, or do you see Ashland as a retirement community in the future?"
Well, first, I'm going to agree entirely with Terry and say that we absolutely need young people at the helm. I stand out a little bit.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm about half the age of the youngest member of town council, so I, I'm a little bit different than the remainder of the makeup of the town council. I agree that we need young people at the helm. There are some fantastic opportunities to involve the youth in Ashland, and it's one of the most important things that we can do as a town council and as a community. So if you take a look at some of the things that are going on in town, and we have the Ashland Street Parties, and those are some really fantastic parties. On the other hand, if you look at the makeup of the audience there, the average age is probably upwards of 35, and so figuring out ways to work with Ashland Street Parties to encourage younger people to attend would be one of the most important things that we can do. Not only that, but I mentioned earlier that it's important to bring arts and culture to our Arts and Culture District, because right now, you know, it's almost arts and culture by name only, and we really need to encourage arts and culture in that area. And by increasing the amount of artistic expression that we have, we're really starting to encourage youth to get involved. We can further our discussions with Randolph Makin, trying to get some of those students involved with the community. There's lots of different things that we can do to start connecting the youth and the town, really making it a vibrant community. Now, as to whether or not I see Ashland becoming a retirement community, this is kind of funny since I was just talking about the retirement community in Green Acres. Why not both? I mean, the town of Ashland is a fantastic place for everybody to live, and we don't just have to let it be a retirement community that is dull and lifeless and, not saying that people who are retired are dull and lifeless, but, hey, I'm the youth candidate, so I am all about youth involvement.
Time, time is up.
Here for everybody. I'm here for you.
Faye, this is your opportunity to respond to this.
You know, I was...
Do you want me to read this question again?
No, I think I got it. I was about to be horribly insulted by the notion that he's about half my age until I did the math and realized he's not even half my age. My child is older than you. No, I, we have, this might be our most kumbaya question. The truth is, small towns can't, can't work if they're all older people, and they can't work if they're all younger people. The reality is, is what creates community is a lot of people working together, bringing their considerable experience and their youthful enthusiasm together. And so how do we accomplish that? I think there are a variety of ways. Some of them have to do with having fewer rental homes and more affordable housing for young people as they come to town. We have lots of houses in town that are nice entry-level homes that young people can afford to buy. They're not on the tracks, but you know what? We don't start out that way in many times, and so we want to make sure that we have lots of places for people to live as they start out. I think we do want to encourage more young people to be members of committees, to be, to join organizations. I think we want the town to be walkable so that folks with young children in strollers can get out and do things and see things in the town.
Thirty seconds.
But I've had dinner with, as did all of council, with Randolph Makin senior staff the other night. We talked about ways to get businesses to hire more Randolph Makin college students because if we want those students in our businesses, if the students work in our businesses, it's likely that other students will go to those businesses. And so we hope that those are strategies that can encourage that.
Okay, thank you. I want to, I want to thank whoever wrote that question. I didn't, I thought it was going to be a terrible question, but it turned out to be one of the best ones of the night so far. The next one I want to direct to Terry Winston Abree. Due to budget problems, how will you spend public money on, on what projects? And how do you, this is like three questions. How do you rate the existing council on spending?
Well, I mean, we need to spend money on lots of different things, but we probably need to spend money, more money, and as far as I'm concerned, there are streets, sidewalks in various communities that need to be taken care of. Well, okay, to answer this question, how do I rate the current council? I think that, based on the information that we're given, well, that they're given, through, from the town manager and the assistant town manager who managed the budget, I think that they're doing as well as they can under the circumstances. I don't know what I'd spend money on, though, other than the streets and, you all have to forgive me because I've been away from this for a while, and I've just been away from it, so I, I'm not quite sure all of what else I would spend money on other than the things that need to be done that I can see personally, and...
Thirty seconds.
I'm basically done with the question.
Same question to James Murray. The question is, "Due to, due to the budget problems, how would you spend our money? On what projects, and how do you rate existing council on their spending?"
Absolutely, and this is, this is a fun two questions here, but first I would like to say that I don't think that the council is old, rather that they are all young at heart, and I look forward to being a part of that. That being said, yeah, there are budget problems, and we certainly are going to have to focus on how we spend our money. You know, I, I live on South Taylor Street, and we could certainly use more sidewalks and streetlights, just like Terry said. There are infrastructure things that have to be taken care of. Yeah, we're short on money this year. Hopefully, this is a more temporary problem than it might otherwise be, since so much of it is mandated projects, VDOT projects, things like that. We must make sure that we continue keeping up the town, because if we don't have a clean, well, brightly painted town, then we're not going to have other people want to join our town, which is going to lead us, lead us into a vicious cycle of more and more budget problems. So we have to make sure that we are actively keeping up the town and making sure that it is a desirable place to be. So even though we have budget problems, we have to be very careful about what money we are not spending. As to what I'd spend money on, you know, if you want to look around you right now, our town offices are in need of some desperate renovation, and, hey, you know, updating Town Hall might be a great way to encourage visitors, visitors to the town, or people who are thinking about establishing a business in town, that this is a business, or this is a town that I want to be a part of. They obviously take pride in their own appearance. They have to take pride in their businesses. So that's what I would spend money on. Now, as to how I would rate the council, I think the council is generally doing a pretty good job. I, I think that there could be a bit more openness, and I think that in terms of communicating what the town does to the community, being clear and direct in every communication would be helpful, making sure that everybody knows what's going on. Thank you.
And to Faye Pritchard, the same question, and that is, "Due to the budget problems, how will you spend our money?" And I hope you'll spend it on a new timer. There we go.
I'm sorry, that's...
And what projects, and on what projects, and how do you rate the existing council on their spending?
Okay. Well, to start with, my ranking would always be that public safety projects come first, followed by economic development projects, and followed by amenities, if that's possible. There's a term that gets bandied around that people don't know very well, but trust me, everybody in local government knows it. It's called TMDL, and it means total maximum daily load. There's not a local government in the, in the state of Virginia that's not thinking about this every day. We are under tremendous pressure from the EPA to reduce the amount of phosphorus and nitrous that we, nitrogen that we put into the bay, and there's no other word than draconian for how difficult those measures are that are being imposed on us right now. And we have to do this. We will be fined very deeply if we do not do it, and so what we try to do is think about this wisely. I have heard some folks say that our downtown parking lot was not a good expenditure of money, even though we had tremendous grant funding to do it. But in fact, one of the things that helped us do was meet our guidelines for TMDL, and so therefore we meet our burden to the state. So every time we try to do something that's TMDL, we also try to combine it with an economic development possibility or some other job. We try to combine things as much as possible for economies of scale. We try to work with other localities for economies of scale. We always knew that 2014 would be our most difficult year. Revenues remain flat, and we still are charged with providing services. And what I would say is, this is a very hard job. I'm happy to have criticism, but I will tell you that when budget time comes, there's generally about four people in this room, and we get very little public input, and we'd be delighted to have it.
The, if I'm looking at this correctly, my next question goes to James Murray, and all, and is directed to all three of you, of course. Can you provide two or three examples of how you would promote new small businesses in downtown Ashland?
I would be happy to. I've said this so many times tonight, I feel like a broken record, that promoting small businesses is one of those things that I really want to focus on. Arts and culture are so important for the community, because we need to have a community that is encouraging to new businesses. Now, when I was talking about auto parts stores and big businesses, you know, I was, I was mentioning that they aren't the small, locally-owned businesses that we're looking for. We're looking for places that, that express new innovative ideas, that, that have their own vision for what's right for Ashland and how they can incorporate themselves... for what's right for Ashland and how they can incorporate themselves into the town. And one of the ways that we can do that is making sure that our downtown area is an area that is full of foot traffic and life and energy. And one of the best ways that we can do that is to promote the arts in the downtown area. It encourages other people to come by. It, you know, it makes, it encourages business owners, when they see what's happening downtown, to really focus on what they, how they can become involved. I mean, what can I say? I'm a, I was a drama major at Randolph Makin. I really like the arts. So what's something else that we can do? Well, one of my platform pieces is access to information and access to reliable data sources. And making sure that our businesses can compete on the internet, making sure that they have reliable access to price-competitive options that are high-speed, that enable them to establish a presence online, to advertise online, to draw people into the community from far further away than they could otherwise, is incredibly important. In fact, more important now than any other time in the world. You know, right now, the United States is 16th globally in internet access. And unless we start fighting this problem from the local level on up, we're never going to get anywhere. So that's one of the ways that we need to encourage small businesses.
And to, I lost my place. Faye Pritchard, right?
Yes, yes, it's me.
I'm just wondering if I went the right direction. I didn't think I did. So the question is, can you provide two or three examples of how you would promote new and small business in downtown Ashland?
Sure. Footwork, footwork, footwork. The truth is that filling small business takes someone working all the time, someone showing properties, someone seeking opportunities, seeking new business, keeping you ready to ground for who's looking to expand from another location, who's a tried and true business somewhere else that might want to, might want to open a shop here, being supportive of business. One of the things I'm very proud of is that when I came into office, and it's certainly, this is not something I have ownership over, that's something the entire council has ownership over. When I came onto the council 12 years, 12 years ago, we had a terrible reputation for dealing with small and large businesses. We were not a friendly group when new businesses came for us. And right or wrong, businesses often felt that we used our regulation as a stick, regulations as a stick rather than a carrot. And we may have made a concerted effort to change that, that when a new business comes to town, someone from town greets them as they turn the lock in the door. And we certainly do tell them what the expectations are because we don't want there to be confusion. We don't want people to spend money on things that they're not allowed to do in the district where they are. But there is a business in town who said to me quite candidly, "I used to own another business here, and when I left, I swore I'd never come back." And my experience this time around has been 100% different. Your staff, Nora, Alexis, have done everything possible to make my business thrive. And that's what we can do. We can provide personal service as well as looking for the kinds of businesses that we want.
And to Terry Winston Abree, how can you provide, or can you provide two or three examples of how you would promote new small business in downtown Ashland?
Again, as I said before, we need to have the types of businesses that people will shop at. What I might like, someone else might not like, you know, it's, that's why I think that surveys are necessary. And since we have benefit of the internet now, and the town has, of course, has had for many years, a website, I think that if we did surveys to find out what types of businesses people want in town, that would be an idea. I think we also need to work with, maybe have, while we have that, the group which works with the town, the council, rather, at Randolph Makin, I think that there needs to be a subgroup of people who are working together, maybe to include the economic development coordinator and maybe the assistant town manager, as well as students who are interested in economic development, and to bring a concern, their concerns to the town in terms of what type of businesses they would like to see here. Because since we have the college so close to us, why not have something that students are interested in, instead of taking the money out of the town of Ashland to, you know, Henrico? Why not have businesses here that students would be interested in? We're talking about young people, what brings young people to town, or what brings young people to town. I think also, in terms of business, small business, or businesses, period, what types of business do we want for younger people to be able to shop at? And as well as our, you know, people like me, senior citizens, what type of businesses would we like? So have something that people are completely interested in, as opposed to something that we think they might want.
I'm trying to put these in order, but this one seems to be a timely question to follow that up. So I'll start off with Faye Pritchard. What's the best use for the Ashland Theater, or how do you envision it being used?
Let me first just say, since I'm following Ms. Winston Abree, and she is my age, I'm not a senior citizen, just so we can clarify this whole, the age thing. Not as long as Claro makes that color. Claro, the theater is a tricky issue. I met with someone to talk about the theater yesterday, and he said something very timely to me. He said, "There are no small communities in Virginia, no small towns, that don't have theaters." And everybody would like to see those theaters come back to life, primarily because we value what used to happen in the theaters. But the trick is, those theaters can't function the way that they used to function. People want to go to movieplexes and have a choice between 20 movie theaters, or 20 movies. They don't want the option of one single-run, second-run film. And if we were to use the theater in such a way, I think what we would find is it would very quickly be a failure, very quickly be a cost to the town. What I imagine for the theater is that we will, we will search for private entities who have some experience in doing this kind of work, and then it may be some sort of partnership. The reality is, there are lots of, there are lots of tax credits to work on theaters. But we have to, we have to diversify its uses. It's going to have to have a lot of different things. It's going to have to have community events and concerts and all sorts of things to be used all the time, if it has any hope of being successful. But as a movie theater, I think alone, I think it has very little likelihood of succeeding.
And we'll ask that same question to Terry Winston Abree. What do you think are the, is the best use for the Ashland Theater? And how do you envision it being used?
I remember the theater from my youth. We used to come, oh, I love that theater. I remember how you entered it. And I remember we used to come on Saturday afternoons and watch the movies. Not every Saturday, but most Saturdays, we'd come and watch the movies and get our popcorn, before it was $10 for 12 ounces, and get our sodas and our mints, chocolate-covered mints. I remember that. Such pleasant memories. Of course, as Faye said, we can't use it for that again. But I think that, you know, I can envision that stage. I can envision young people dancing across the stage and performing. A way to get young people, I'm going back to that question again, a way to get young people more involved in the town. You know, if you had something like that where, and it's not to slight the theater that we have over here now, because, you know, everybody makes their efforts. But if we had something like that, that's right there in the center of town, where young people could come and perform, and their parents come, as you know how we do on, go to the schools and see them perform and their plays and so forth, to have something like that right here in the center of the town would be nice. Not just that, but also to use it maybe as a place where a fundraiser-
Thirty seconds.
For organizations that are trying to promote certain types of services. You could have different functions there. Of course, it would be of the arts, singing, dancing, and that type of thing, where you could raise money to help different organizations. We have such needs in town that are not being addressed. And so maybe that's one thing that it could be used for as well. But I see it, you know, definitely for the youth.
Okay, and the same question to James Murray. What do you think are the best uses for the Ashland Theater, and how do you envision it being used?
Very little excites me more about the future of Ashland than the Ashland Theater. I think of this as a shining tower of opportunity. There are so many different, exciting things that we can do with it. As to whether or not it can return to being a theater, absolutely, it can return to being a theater. That's just one of dozens of possible uses that the Ashland Theater has. It has this opportunity to become a true rallying point for the town, a treasure trove of community involvement. Not only can we show, you know, films in town and try to encourage people across the town to come see whatever new blockbuster is out, but we can show films that were created in town. I mean, I've made two of them so far. I would have loved for them to appear in the Ashland Theater, where they would have done the most good. We can encourage Randolph Makin students to come into town using the theater. They have a new theater on campus now, but, you know, I'm sure that quite a few of the students would come back out into the town if there were a few more places for them to go for entertainment. You can have events on the stage. You can have, you know, live-stream presidential debates. There are so many different options for the Ashland Theater, and so many different ways to make it a vibrant center of activity. As Faye said earlier, I think the solution is footwork, footwork, footwork. Whoever is in charge of the Ashland Theater can't just be complacent with setting up a few options and letting it run. You have to be active in the community. You have to encourage as much involvement as you possibly can. We really need to turn the Ashland Theater from, we need to turn it into a public landmark because right now, it sort of exists as a public eyesore. And having this beautiful theater that's active and encouraging will draw people not only into our community, but from outside the community as well. It's a landmark in the town and one that we absolutely need to get up and running.
My next question is for Terry Winston Abree to start off. What's the status of the East Ashland Development, and how will it affect Ashland?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, this is going to be an easy question, then, isn't it? I'll pass that question along to you, then, James. What do you think? What's the status of the East Ashland Development, and how will it affect Ashland?
I find myself in the alarming position of, again, having to say, "I'm not sure about this one." I've had a lot of conversations about different developments in the town, but this one has not yet come up. So I very much look forward to hearing about the status of the East Ashland Development Project and what we can do about it. Mayor Pritchard?
This is going to be my easiest question of the night, isn't it? I'll turn that same question over to Faye.
It's not going to be my easiest question of the night. As most folks know, there was zoning in place. East Ashland has a difficult history with us. A plan was put forward. We rejected the plan. We were sued. A judge asked us to go back to the table and work with the developer to come up with something that everybody could live with. We went back to the table. We worked with a development that was not our greatest desire, but something that everybody could live with. And then that developer went bankrupt. And so that property was sold. It is currently in the hands of the Shire family. When the Shires came forward with development plans, essentially, they wanted to put a very, they wanted to ditch the plans that we had, put a very large mall there, and said some things like, "Well, of course, it'll kill your downtown. That's what development does." And we said, "Well, no." And so nothing is the status with East Ashland. The Shires own the property, have made no move to do anything with that property. And they own it, and it is their right to do nothing with it until they decide to come back with another proposal for the town.
I have a question here that's in three parts, and I think I'm directing this towards James Murray first. And it's a question that's directed to each of the individual candidates. But if I can summarize it, it's basically asking to describe what your experience will add as an enhancement to the town council.
Fantastic. Well, I mentioned earlier that I'm a bit younger than most of the rest of the council. And so my body of experience is somewhat different than the rest of the council, that this is the first position I've ever run for. I don't have any official public service experience. So what, where my background lies is not only in connecting with the youth in Ashland, and something that I think is incredibly important, to make sure that all of the constituencies in Ashland are represented and represented well. But also, I do have a business background. I mentioned that I left Ashland briefly. And when I did so, I traveled to Russia seeking out internship opportunities. And while I was there, I worked for McCann Erickson and BBDO, and those are two of the largest advertising companies in the world. But while I was over there, I realized that I didn't really like the model that most large advertising companies use, and that they really look out for the big fish in the pond while rejecting small businesses that might not be able to afford to pay them their many hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars advertising projects. So one of the things that I did was, when I came back to Ashland, I decided that I was going to do what I could to help small businesses find appropriate advertising options for them. And so a lot of my experience comes from working with small businesses in the town and connecting the businesses and the residents to the best of my ability. Now, I do have experience with leadership while working in the college, and I'm certainly going to draw on that experience as well. But I think my greatest asset here is my ability to talk with the businesses in the town and to make sure that the town, the businesses, and the residents are all well-connected together and that we can be a big, happy community.
You sound like me.
And the same question directed toward Faye Pritchard. What do you think your experience adds to the town council?
I think I bring three kinds of experience to my work on town council. I have served as a member of town council for 12 years, as the mayor for 10 years. I am a font of institutional memory, some of which I wish I could get rid of. But I've done my homework for 12 years. I have, I have loved this town. I have cared for this town. I've given up family vacations. I have spent a lot of time understanding the issues. And I think I know how this town runs very well, and I've been very committed to it. I also bring the experience of being a regional worker. In the last 12 or so years, the council has made a really concerted effort to not be an island. We are part of the Richmond region. We have reached out to others around us. I know practically every elected official in the nine jurisdictions, well, we are one of nine jurisdictions that surrounds us. If we have a problem, if we need to buy something on an economy of scale, I can call someone from Powhatan or New Kent and find out how other small localities do what we do. We don't have to invent, reinvent the wheel every time because we have a lot of contacts who've already done things that we would like to do. So I have those relationships. And finally, I have my experience as a teacher. I teach critical thinking-
Thirty seconds.
Research, writing, and writing. And I have learned over the course of time to sometimes sit back and look at things very carefully and make sure that I've looked at all sides of an issue before I make an emotional decision, because emotional quick decisions, in my case, are almost always the wrong ones.
And to Terry Winston Abree, the same question. What do, what does your experience, what can you tell us about your experience, and what can you add to the town council?
Well, I don't want to brag, but- Well, I don't want to brag, but, if, you all will see, if you'll get a flyer, if you don't have a flyer, these are some of the contributions that I've made over the years. When the lady wrote it out for me, she said, I had given her some information, and she said, "Well, you don't want to put everything, because people are not going to read all of that stuff." And so, one of the, some of the things that I've done, well, let me put it this way. I feel that I am open to all people. I think that people can identify with me on lots of different topics, and the ways that I think and feel about people in general, which means that I care. I care about this town. And so, whenever I've made a decision, when I was on council previously, whenever I made a decision about anything, I based it on what I felt was, what was best, in some cases, for, for the community, and some, and most cases, for the town itself. I have worked with young people, senior citizens, and people my age, in many different ways. In terms of voting, helping people to make, make sure that people are able to vote, those people who can't get to the polls, for example, doing absentee ballots, doing voter registration, when I served on council before, having academic achievement programs, and identifying people in the community who had been, not been recognized, the unsung heroes of town. And to be able to have, and sometimes it may not sound, sound like it, but to be able to have an understanding of what is actually happening in town, and to try to make things better.
Oh, I'm sorry I let you go too long. I was fascinated. I just went past, past time, I should have stopped you. Thank you. I have a few more questions to ask you, but I see that we're getting close to the time, and what I'd like to do is have our closing remarks, but if it's okay with everyone, what if we add an extra minute, instead of three, four minutes? If there are no objections, I would think that would probably be appropriate. And, let's see, I started with James' last question, so I'll start with Fay this time, and if you would give us four minutes to wrap up, and tell us a little bit about your campaign.
Well, I think in the last dozen years, what I have done is become a student of Ashland. I have spent all of my time learning how this town works, learning who the players are, learning what the goals are, and trying very much to represent the people who live here. It's interesting to me what happens in the day, literally the day, between the day you sit out there and the day you sit up here. When you're sitting out there, what happens is, you've got a lot of ideas about how Ashland works, and you're absolutely sure all of yours are better than all the people who are sitting up here. And then suddenly, you are up here on this side of the desk, and you are, in my case, somewhat humorously, the man. And, and people are very quick to criticize. This is hard, this is hard work, and, and I, I don't know how much you all know about what Town Council members get paid. I get three hundred and fifty dollars a month, we haven't taken a raise in over ten years. That is precisely amount, the amount of money I pay the lady who cleans my house, which I no longer have time to do, because I do this. No one does Town Council, because they make a fortune. Your county supervisors get made, paid ten times what we get paid, and arguably, we work just as hard. No one does this for, it's surely not the power, trust me. No one does this for any other reason than they have a deep, abiding love and commitment to the town. If you don't do that, you don't choose to stay here very long. This is not a job that's nine to five, this is a job that's nine to nine. And for twelve years, I have been the luckiest person in the entire town. For twelve years, I have been entrusted to think long and hard about what our goals are, about how we take care of the town. I have been giving, given the gift of taking care of my beloved. And my husband often says that he knows that he comes second to Ashland, he calls himself the second husband, which is sort of true. But this, this is a thing that I think I have grown to do well, because I have committed to it, I have spent the time to commit to it. And, I'm afraid I'm not going to take four minutes, Bill-
That's fine.
-I'm going to say that I think I've run a steady home for, for twelve years, I think I have done my job, I think I have listened when I've been talked to, I think I've elicited responses, and I hope that you will trust me to do this for at least four more, before I am far too old to continue. Thank you.
Terry Winston Abree.
You know, I'm fifty-eight years old, and most of those years, I've spent in Ashland. And, when I came back to Ashland in nineteen ninety, I saw that Ashland had really changed from the time that I left it in nineteen seventy-five. And I saw growth and development and new life, and it was exciting to me. But in nineteen ninety, I could not become a part of what I wanted to do, which was to get more involved in the town, and do all the things, all the questions that you all have been asking about making people, or helping people to become more involved in the town. I couldn't do those things, because I'm a divorcee, and I had an eleven-year-old son. And my goal was to stay on his back, and to make sure that his grades were kept up, and that he was going to be able to get a full ride in college. And he did. And so, in nineteen ninety-eight, when he graduated, right before he graduated, I became involved in the political process, in assisting two candidates to, to get on council. And so, then I was able to work in the communities, not just my community, but in other communities as well, talking to people about what's happening in Ashland, becoming more part of what was going on in Ashland, and how we can feel that we belong to Ashland too. Because you see, while I, while I was, you know, a little bit older at that point, I felt like, hey, I'm not the only one that's here that wants to be a part of it, but because of the way that Ashland was developed over the years, we still have some issues that we have to deal with. And so, with those issues come separation, and sometimes, not necessarily an unwillingness to be together, but maybe just not knowing how to be together, because we haven't always been that way, it hasn't been the norm for us. So, we have to go beyond what is, what, what has become the norm, and what has become familiar and comfortable, and come outside of that, and press towards each other in a way that is going to be comfortable together. Working together in this town, making sure that we forge ahead to make this a brighter, brighter future for this town. We can work together as citizens of the town to make that happen. And so, with our small businesses, with our other businesses, whether they're small or not, and with our attitudes, you know, we want this place to be like an oasis, you know, that's the idea. Because if we're the center of the universe, we need to start acting more like people would act in the center of the universe. And this place where, when you go into a business, now I'll tell you where I like to go, up in Blacksburg, I think it is, where Virginia Tech is, the people are so nice up there. My son had gone up there, we had gone, because they were trying to get him to come up there and wrestle for them. But the kids were so nice, the people in the stores were so nice, and the people in motel were nice-
Thirty seconds.
-everybody was nice. And that was a place where I said, "God, I would, I wouldn't mind living here." Now, that's how we want Ashland to be. We want Ashland to grow, yes, and we want it to grow moderately, but we also want its people to be happy. We want us, we want our people to feel comfortable with each other, and we want other people, when they come into the town of Ashland, to feel like they are a part of Ashland. We have a secure group of police officers who look after us, and I'm really grateful for that.
Time. Okay, thank you. And, uh, let me turn to James Murray.
Thank you. Hopefully, despite my best efforts, I haven't entirely offended everybody over the age of thirty here. I, yes, thank you. I, I said it earlier, that I love the town of Ashland, that somehow, it kept on drawing me back in, despite my best efforts to leave, and I am so grateful that it has continued to do so. And I've finally given up and tried to incorporate myself as much as I possibly can. I've been happy with the way the town exists, the way that the town is running. I'm not running for Town Council because I am disgusted with the town or the council. I didn't write up some big list of demands and march on Town Hall, saying, "No, I'm going to kick you all out of office and, and replace it all with my own ideas." The town is running pretty well, and I want to make sure that it continues to run well. Now, I, I certainly am grateful for the breadth of experience of everybody that exists on the council now, but that's not to say that we don't need a younger voice on the council. We need to make sure that every constituency in Ashland is represented, and that they're represented well. And while I don't have as many years of experience as the other members of the council, I hope that I've shown you this evening that, that I'm certainly willing to do the legwork, I'm certainly willing to do my homework, when it comes to figuring out how the town is run. This has been nothing if not an incredibly educational process, and every single second that I learn new things about the town, I, I love the process more and more, because there are so many different ways, so many different opportunities to get involved with this wonderful community. I mentioned that I live on South Taylor Street, and this is a, a community where, you know, you walk down the street, and every single person waves at you, everybody knows your name, everybody looks out for everybody else. And it was, it was a wonderful place for, for us to end up, my fiancee and I. And, you know, I, I grew up in a small town, like I mentioned earlier, and I thought that was a close-knit community. You know, it was, it was a town of three thousand people, so quite a bit smaller than Ashland, we didn't even have a traffic light. So, when I come to Ashland, and I realize that, that this is a tighter community than the one I had grown up in, I don't think it's difficult to see why I've fallen in love with this community quite as much as I have. It, it is a wonderful, wonderful place to be. So, you know, we, we need a new voice for Ashland, I think. We, we need a voice that, that is younger, that can express useful ideas. One of the earlier questions was, you know, how can we involve youth community, and is this, is this just going to be a community to retire in? And I said, you know, why not both? We have, we have a fantastic representation now, but, but, you know, if we want to get the youth involved, we need to make sure that the youth are getting involved, and, and so that's one of the reasons why I'm, I'm running here today. Very early on in the campaign process, I was asked, "So, why should we vote for you?" And, and I had this moment of panic, you know, "Why, why would I vote for me?" And it gave me a lot of thought, and I realized that, you know, why, why would I vote for me? It's because I want to make sure that the people of Ashland are involved, I want to make sure that they're involved at every level, that, that we have somebody speaking in, in favor of, of youth involvement, that we have somebody speaking in favor of the arts, that, that we have somebody who's not been involved with the town for so many years that, you know, like Mayor Pritchard said, she has a lot of institutional memory-
Thirty seconds.
-and some of it she might want to get rid of. I don't have that institutional memory. I'm seeing this all as somebody who is new, and somebody who can come with a new perspective and a new voice. And I'll make sure that, that the voice that I have is, is clear and direct, and, and I look forward very much to working with all of you, as, as we move towards Ashland's future. Thank you.
And I have no more questions. Actually, I do have some more questions, but we ran out of time, so my apologies to those of you who didn't get your questions asked, but I think that we had a good variety of questions. We've heard a lot of praiseworthy things about Ashland, but one thing we haven't heard is how grateful we should be to have three of the finest candidates for these jobs. It's just amazing to me that on- On next, next Tuesday, you can't go wrong. And the polls will be open next Tuesday, so a week from today, two seats are open, three fine candidates, and we appreciate all of you for coming and being with us, and I appreciate all of you for coming and being with us. And if Patty is, Patty, I guess, has left. If there are any other questions, comments, I want to thank our sponsors, and our candidates, and you for coming tonight, and hopefully the rain has stopped.